Alrighty, here we are, town meeting time. Good morning. It's Wednesday the 13th. Lucky you, you're tuned in with us here. And today, we are going to speak with Kate Morse, Program Director at the Copper River Watershed Project, to learn about some restoration projects they have underway and some others that will be coming up, doing their best to see that culverts are working the way they're supposed to, and streams are accessible and that kind of thing. Plus, as Earth Day gets closer, there is the Wild and Scenic Film Festival, so we're going to learn about that, and the artistic learning opportunity embedded therein. We're able to be here, thanks to Cordova Wireless Communications, a local business with world-class customer service. Work with them and experience what you have always thought customer service should be: warm, friendly, and genuine, with a complete dedication to making sure you have a thorough understanding of their products and services before making any purchase decisions. Know before you buy. And then, once you're a customer, you'll get the support you need, as they help educate you on your smart devices and everything they can do and everything the network can do. World-class customer service at a local business, Cordova Wireless Communications. Let's get into our town meeting program now, with Kate Morse, on KLAM. So Kate, let's begin with this Salmon Habitat project. Now, there's one specifically coming up, but actually, this has been going on for, what, a year, couple of years? How long has the restoration been underway?
So, the project of focus right now is the Little Tonsina, which is about 72 miles north of Valdez on the Richardson Highway. And it has, the planning has actually been initiated since 2017, the Copper River Watershed Project tried to pick up momentum. But I guess you could really say that our efforts to know that this was a high-priority crossing started back in 2007, 2008. There had been some regional planning processes that were reviewing the status of Salmon Habitat in the region. And as recently as 2002, at the time, it was more recent than today, Fish and Game and Department of Transportation had evaluated culverts within the Copper River Watershed, and using a system that Fish and Game has developed to measure the characteristics of a culvert, to determine its ability to pass fish. And at the time, there were only 4% of culverts that passed the test and were considered to be passing fish. 62% that were impassable to fish, and 30-some percent that needed more information to determine passibility. But what that didn't tell us was which of these culverts were associated with the best fish habitat. And so, we worked with partners to include US Fish and Wildlife Service, Alaska Department of Fish and Game, Alaska Department of Transportation, Bureau of Land Management, National Park Service, US Forest Service, some of these being landowners who are responsible for managing land, but they're looking within their boundaries. And we wanted to look across the entire watershed, where we might not have a lot of roads, especially Cordovans might think that there's not that many roads, can't be that many culvert problems. But for every two miles of road in our watershed, we have a culvert. And we had a lot that were not functioning, or are not functioning well for fish. And I want to take a moment to say that passibility of fish, typically those adult-spawning fish that are so attractive and delicious, are the headline-getters. But they're pretty capable of passing a lot of barriers. They can jump up to 12 feet, they can jump over large beaver dams, they can get through pipes, culverts that might not be their ideal size or the ideal placement. However, for species like Coho and King Salmon, and Sauk Eye Salmon as well, they spend multiple years in freshwater before migrating out to the ocean. And so, it's those baby fish that have the hardest time passing through culverts. And so, that's what Fish and Game's measurements are looking at, is the ability for a culvert to pass juvenile salmon, or about a 60-millimeter-length fish. And so, we have developed a system to get a score for the fish habitat, and then have some scores for the culvert. And then, by comparing those scores, we've been able to identify, these are the poorest-functioning culverts on the highest-quality fish habitat. And it took many years and many seasons to collect this information, and we worked with our partners. Sometimes, we collected it, sometimes Fish and Game collected it. But then, we would score it and evaluate it with our partners. And through that process, we were able to, what I like to say, separate the signal from the noise. And through that, this Little Tonsina project, coming back to the project of focus, was the highest priority project, because it was, the Tonsina Drainage is a glacial-fed river in our watershed that's home to Coho and King Salmon. And the Little Tonsina is a major tributary of the Tonsina River. And just a quarter mile above where those rivers come together, or the confluence, is where there are currently two super-under-sized culverts. And for folks that have been around for a while in Cordova, we remember that 2006 was a year that we experienced a lot of flooding here, and that was true around the state. And up in Little Tonsina, there's this road that comes off the highway that is access to a really important material site for DOT. It's where they get riprap that built the different heartbreak waters and whatnot in the region. So, this road blew out the culverts in this flood, and then, they were able to get an emergency fix. DOT was able to put two small culverts back at this site, but due to cost limitations, had not been able to come back and do the proper fix. And so, that was where the watershed project saw a role that we could play, which was to try to get partners on the same page as far as recognizing the implications this crossing is having on access to fish habitat, and then figure out ways to identify funding to move, get the project rolling again. And it really started rolling when Department of Transportation was able to identify a million dollars in a bridge restoration fund. So, these were culverts, and they are culverts now to begin with, but a bridge is actually the preferred alternative, and might not actually cost that much different compared to the size of the pipe that would be needed if we were to try to replace it with a culvert. Because once you get to a certain-size culvert, you need to have other engineering structures in place to keep it in place and to hold it upright the way to the road. So, anyway, it's expensive, and so, it was not moving fast forward quickly. But then, Department of Transportation was able to put forward a million dollars, and because it was a non-federal source of funding, we were able to use that money and pursue federal funding sources. We've got lots of funding through the Fish and Wildlife Service, or the Bureau of Land Management, who manages lands in the area. We've received funding from the Denali Commission, Alaska Sustainable Salmon Fund. We have funding through NOAA, their Community and Coastal Resilience Program. And then, we have in-kind contributions from the underlying landowner, who's Two Gatch Alaska Corporation, and they've donated a new right-of-way and some land to be able to help with the improved alignment of the crossing. So, it's really taken a lot of partners, a lot of resources from a lot of different locations, to be able to fully fund completing the design. And then, we're about to transition into construction.
So, that's the part that's coming up, then, in the near future, is to actually... Now, has the problem with a lot of these ones that have needed to be redone, is it just inadequacy in most cases, or is it a result of damage? I mean, you talk, something that I hadn't thought about, you know, you think, well, just put a, you put a great big pipe in there, but then, of course, things can't drive over it without it caving, duh. So, what has been, is it just been that they have been inadequate, or the science has gotten better, and you've realized you need more flow, or what sort of precipitated, I guess, the discovery of these needs?
So, there, I can't, I don't know when the agreement was first created, but Alaska Department of Fish and Game and Alaska Department of Transportation, they have an agreement between the two agencies for how to manage stream crossings with culverts under state-owned roads. I think part of the issue is, I mean, especially here in Cordova, is where we live on a river delta that's fed by a lot of glaciers that aren't that far away, like Sharon Glacier and Scott Glacier, they're not that far away relative, like from headwaters out to the Gulf of Alaska, their ocean mouth. And so, those systems are very dynamic because of the amount of silt and rock and material that's carried. And so, you build a road one year, but you're building it on a moving system. So, I mean, you can definitely see when, you know, we don't have a bridge at 36-mile anymore, because the bridges that were built to withstand the capacity, or convey the capacity of the Copper River at 27-mile are not getting the bulk of the Copper River that they were when they were built and designed. And the same thing's true for culverts.
Yeah, well, I mean, because glacial river systems, yeah, they shift around all the time, you know, they just, you'll have a main channel, the cut bank is here one year, and then, it's the fill bank the next year, because Mother Nature does what Mother Nature does. So, yeah, it's kind of amazing.
Precipitation changes, the rate of melting of glaciers changes, and ebbs and flows depending on the season. And so, all of that can impact the integrity of the culvert. And then, there is just a better, I mean, like, everything evolves with our understanding as far as design strategies and ways to install and build culverts that have a lesser impact on movement of, in our case, aquatic organisms. But you can see, especially in the West, where there's huge migration corridors for wildlife, that they're actually building wildlife bridges, or wildlife culverts, to be able to pass animals safely over high-volume traffic roads.
Yeah, they go over the roads, yeah.
Yeah, there's, and there's really amazing technology and engineering designs that have continued to evolve. And so, we work with our partners to try to maximize what we can do, but then, you know, costs can become prohibitive, maintenance can be challenging. When we're looking at our culverts, we're not only thinking about the size of them to pass the water through, but we're thinking about, can we keep materials in the bottom of the pipes to make it look like the bottom of a stream? Because those larger rocks or woody debris are important for creating resting spots for fish, as well as places where food might settle out. And so, that diversity of habitat features is what we call it in the biz, is an important thing to maintain, too. And so, we're looking to make sure that whatever water's passing through the pipe is not going to blow out all of the material that we're trying to strategically place in there.
Yeah, well, I mean, and it's fascinating to go over. I didn't, I didn't know how complex that was to the layperson. It's like, just find a big pipe and stick it in there, and it's all about water. And obviously, people that know better. Now, has this project encompassed some of our, you mentioned that this, the current project is closer to Valdez. Have some fruits of this project been seen locally as well?
So, not particularly to the Little Tonsina restoration work, but as far as trying to improve fish passage throughout our watershed, we have definitely been, it should be visible to people who have been going out the road the past few years, because there's been six culverts replaced in 20, in the past two field seasons, 2020 and 2021. And then, before that, the watershed project has worked with partners on a few other, like Goose Meadows. We worked, we helped DOT raise some funds for the crossing that they redesigned a few years back at the intersection of Alleghenick Road and the highway, right at 17-mile there. So, we have definitely identified some high-priority projects on the Copper River Highway, Copper River Delta. And we've been working with partners at the Forest Service, Fish and Wildlife Service, NOAA, Fish and Game, and Department of Transportation, and EAC Corporation, to address those high-priority crossings. And we were able to receive funding in 2017 from Exxon Valdez Oil Spill Trustee Council. So, that was a huge gust of wind in our sails, because rather than taking a few years to raise the funds and check one of our high-priority crossings off the list, we were able to, like, look at 25-mile and see the network of drainages out there, and how they connect, and replace multiple culverts, looking at the whole system rather than just one at a time. Last summer, we did work at 18-mile, would have been where people would have seen our, seen construction going on. But you're absolutely right, it is never just a pipe under the ground. There's always surprises out in the highway. It is amazing to see the railroad infrastructure, you know, built in the early 1900s. That still takes so much work to get removed in order to, you know, get the pipe in place. Those early engineers, Heaney and his crew, were very impressive, what they accomplished out there in the delta.
So, with, and you mentioned this giant list of projects at the federal, state, and tribal levels, you know, even Alavesca Pipeline is on the list. And what is, in the midst of all of this, all of these groups, what is kind of, what is the watershed project's role in a project like the Tonsina project?
I have heard terms like a convener or a facilitator. On a daily basis, I feel more like a herder of cats. I am a generalist, I'm the daughter of an engineer with a passion for aquatic ecology, and my undergrad degree was in aquatic ecology. And I came up to Alaska, and it became the most incredible natural classroom I could ever land in, as far as, you know, teaching and sharing what I love about the natural world with young people, and...
You have never lacked enthusiasm for that, in the many times we have spoken, so I can testify.
Not lost that, but I have diversified what I do, and I work with a lot more adults than I used to. But it's, it's, it's a good, a fun challenge. There's a lot of really passionate people that are really knowledgeable about hydrology, about fish habitat, about fish ecology, about engineering. And so, just work with all of the experts and the different folks that have either access to the land, or responsibility for implementing and overseeing permits to the agencies responsible for managing the resources of fish and the wildlife. So, we try to find time when we can bring everybody together, and try to help keep information on the same page, so that everyone has access to the same information, and then keep that ball rolling forward. So, we definitely do a lot of convening. We've got hydrology and fish biologists on our staff as well, who help with the field surveys and the scoring that I described, in order to determine which projects we want to take on. So, we do have some of the in-house expertise, but a lot of what we do is definitely working on bringing the partners together. And then, as a nonprofit, we are able to apply for a range of funding sources, as well as generate unrestricted incomes through our members. And so, we do appreciate and value, even, it might not seem like, you know, we're building a $3-million bridge, but, you know, it might not seem a lot when you're a member who's contributing $25 or $50. But like, this effort started over a decade ago, to be able to build those relationships with partners, to collect the data, and all of that early innovation and fundraising took people investing in us and our skillset to be able to herd the cats together and to pursue the resources. And so, I just want to give a shout-out to any members that are tuning in, that it's definitely a part of your support that enables us to, you know, poke things around, identify the right cats to bring to the table, and then to get the momentum to bring people together and garner both financial and expert support for the work that we take on.
Yeah, well, and I mean, we've seen that in multiple cases. You not only have to have the funding to keep your office open, and to have staff in order to do this work, but very often, when a funder is looking at a project, they want to see if there's local buy-in. Do people in the community care about the project enough to invest some treasure in it, basically? And I mean, we saw that, I remember the constant conversations I used to have with Kathy Sherman about the, about the Cordova Center. And that, we went over that over and over and over again, that the big funders, if they don't see any local buy-in, they're not going to be interested in financing it, because they're going to say, well, nobody, but nobody in your town cares. They don't back it, so why are we going to spend a bunch? So, yeah, I mean, the leveraging of the dollars invested by members, again, as you said, even if they, if they may seem like they barely make a dent in a big project, that's leveraged forward in a number of different ways, and clearly is very important. And in fact, we're going to talk about a way for people to get involved in that in just a bit, when we talk Wild and Scenic Film Festival. I'm curious, though, I don't know if we covered it in a capsule, we kind of touched on it a little bit before, but for me, anybody that's maybe joining us a little late, what is it that makes this specific, this Tonsina project? Why is this particular fish passage project so important? Why did it get a high score?
Yeah, so it got a high score, because it is, they were very undersized culverts in a very large system. That's the Little Tonsina, which is a significant tributary to the Tonsina. And this, the fish passage blockade issue is about a quarter mile above the confluence, and there's estimated, using GIS, we haven't walked every mile to verify it, but there's over 70 miles of potential upstream King Salmon and Silver Salmon habitat. Some of it spawning for adults, for sure. But also, I mentioned earlier the importance, really, for these fish passage projects, on helping to support the movement of juvenile or baby salmon. And, you know, both Coho and Chinook, or the Silver and King Salmon, spend multiple years in freshwater before they migrate out to the ocean. And so, if you imagine the size of your nursery, the more, the larger your nursery, the more babies you can support. And the more babies you support, the higher outmigration you have, contribution to the ocean, in hopes of having a greater return at the other end of that migration, when they come back to spawn. And so, we're just trying to keep all of these habitats, both spawning and rearing for the baby fish, intact and connected, so that we can maximize the fish that are supported in the watershed. I also just want to touch on quickly, you mentioned earlier that there, you know, there is Alavesca Pipeline running through our watershed, with a, you know, a great group of people who live in the region and work and monitor to ensure nothing happens. But there are, you know, could be from the pipeline, there could, there's been, more recently, actually tanker trucks that have had fuel spills. But there could, we've had, 2019 was one of the warmest years we've had on record recently, so we had low precipitation and warming in streams. So, whether it be an acute event like an oil spill, or a climatic event like a warm, dry drought-like summer, there might be habitat that's not as ideal. And so, being able to maximize movement between other habitats is important to juvenile fish, so that they can maximize their growth. They can be in the places where they have the highest chance of living and growing, growing up healthy, because it's cold, clear water, with abundant food, and good shelter from predators. You start winnowing that away, and you lose that, the value of the habitat, and then, the contributions that can be made to support the fish.
Sure. Well, and of course, if, again, if they can't get out of the stream and into the ocean, then they can't get into anybody's net, so...
Yeah, nobody's telling.
And like you said, they, you mentioned the word delicious earlier, so, yeah. Just quickly, before we move on, assuming Little Tonsina is successful, you know, gets underway the way you hope, what, where are your sights set next?
Well, in addition to some continued work on culverts, we've got some other high-priority projects that we'll be connecting with partners on in the region. Some on the Copper River Delta, we're continuing to work on designing and identifying funds for constructing, so Cordovans can stay tuned. We have funding for one or two culverts to be replaced next summer. None, we're not doing one this summer, but there will be a DOT project out around 20-mile on the highway, so there will be some culvert work going on, it's just not ours that we're in charge of. But anyway, back to the question, we do have more culverts up in the Copper Basin, around the Glen Allen area that we're working on. But then, for Cordovans, another unique fish passage challenge that we'll be working on, that needed the same energy to herd cats together as replacing or improving EAC weir at the outlet of the lake, where the river starts, is formed as it drains out to the ocean. There's a weir that was placed back in 1972, and it's been a little bit of a, I felt like a little like Aaron Brockovich, as I was investigating some of the history, because there was no clear paper trail for who owned it, and any efforts made to try to do any maintenance since its installation stalled out, because answering the "who owns it?" question was very difficult. But I did spend some time in the archives of the Cordova Times, and starting, knowing that it had been built in '72, which I found because of an online search that showed a legal case related to the installation of the weir, so it showed that it was a contract in 1972. I was able to find articles in the Cordova Times about the initial meetings with the community, and then, when they were searching for contractors to bid on it, and then, the celebratory, something from the governor, who was excited about the implementation of the project. It was initially done after the earthquake, so that the water would not keep draining from the lake, because there's the Sauk Eye Salmon that spawn there, need the shallow, near-shore water. They use that area for spawning, and so, as the lake was receding, it was going to expose and make those not-so-valuable of spawning areas. So, the attempt was to keep the water level at a certain height, but it's starting to bow a little bit.
Yeah, I noticed that when we, when we came in, when we were driving back in, I don't know, a couple of weeks ago, saying, yeah, that's looking kind of old.
Yeah, yep. And the boat slot that was built in there is not quite that safe, and the platform that I think was there, and maybe something has been put back there for fishing, is not super-safe or easy to get to. And so, we have worked with the partners that we have done our culvert work with, and use that, all those relationships and positive experiences, working together to try to get momentum on this particular challenge. And last year, we were able to pull together some funding sources to do some preliminary investigations, and see what are some concepts to even consider, like, what is something that's actually constructible? What does it look like underneath the pilings, so that what are our options for reinforcing or reinstalling something new? And then, with the concept, we were able to get, like, community feedback on what were the features that they wanted to see. And in the end, had a concept that was able to support our fish passage goals, as well as boat access and safer recreational fishing. And we were able to propose that to the Exxon Valdez Oil Spill Trustee Council, and in there, I think it took two meetings, but maybe in January, they officially approved, and we're slowly working through the paperwork to be able to get that project running again. So, big news, and the culmination of this story, is that next year, we hope to be constructing at EAC Lake weir to reinforce the existing structure. The current concept, that we'll be going through a design process this year, and we'll certainly invite people to tune in and participate, and provide feedback. And people should get in touch with our office if you're interested in being on that list. If you haven't heard about the project, I can add you to the list that we send updates to. And we will let people chime in as we move forward. So, we're thinking it'll be a similar weir that's installed, we'll keep this, the current structure there, and put another weir in a little bit downstream, and then, fill it with material, and then, do some other bioengineering and strategic placement of material to both protect the weir itself, as well as to improve the gradient for that fish are swimming upstream, so that it is, they have kind of like a step pool, steps that are pools of water to work up, to get over the weir and into the lake.
Well, those have seemed to work pretty well other places. You know, if they can navigate the ladders, they can probably handle what you're talking about.
Yeah, no, and it's, I think, I mean, fish passage, again, like, adults are able to get up and over. It's more the movement of the juvenile fish. And in the case of EAC Lake, it's not just salmon, there's also ballywarten and cutthroat trout that are moving through and using the lake, as well as its tributaries for feeding and spawning. So, want to make sure all of those fish can move back and forth between the lake, the river, and the ocean as they need to.
All right, well, gotta keep your cat lasso handy, I guess. And now, we're going to actually, oh, you know, I was just thinking, we need, we need like a transition. I forgot, in this new gadget, I actually have a harp. Now, it's time to turn the page. And we are going to talk about the, you know, and this actually ties back into what we were saying about membership, and some of the events that you guys do to get people excited about the watershed project. One of those is always the Wild and Scenic Film Festival, which I can't remember, were you guys kind of hamstrung with this by COVID over the last couple of years? Does this represent a return to in-person, or was it that dramatic for this?
Yeah, this is our return to in-person. We're very excited about that, but we are doing it cautiously, and also knowing that one of the things that we gained from having to build our virtual muscles throughout the pandemic, is that as a watershed organization with an office based in the one community in the watershed that's not on the road system, being effective at connecting virtually and over distance is a really important feature to have as part of our organization. And so, the hometown crowd here in Cordova gets to have the extra perk of being the first audience that is able to come in person. We do have options for viewing the film festival if you are not able, or not wanting to tune in in-person, or not in Cordova. And we'll continue to be enrolling our in-person events, so that we can continue to connect with people in-person together, because that's, you know, where those relationships are best built, is when we're together. So, yeah, so we did do a virtual-only Wild and Scenic Film Festival last year, and we had, this is actually a national event that puts together a large menu of film festivals. national event that puts together a large menu of film festivals or of film options. And then a local host can then piece together the lineup they want. And so we have paid for the opportunity to be able to host these films. There was a period of time where we actually would recruit our own local movies and put together our own film lineup. And we would have that in conjunction with our Wild Food Feast, which was our cook-off and sharing those sweet tricks of the kitchen that we all have for preparing and enjoying our, our local harvestable goods, fish game and otherwise. But we have not gone as far as bringing that yet back yet. But maybe this fall, we'll look to, to provide a forum for people to show off the amazing foods that they prepare using that which grows walks and swims in our region.
Yeah. But as far as this year's festival, now a hybrid festival, it sounds like. And this is the, the film festival part of it. So what's happening? When?
Right. So for those who want to come in person, we are having the weekend of Earth Day, April 22nd, the Friday is Earth Day. And then our film event is that evening at the Cordova Center. Doors are going to open at 6:15. We'll have some snacks and some information about our organization. And then the films start at seven and it's a, a list of about eight films with a short intermission between. And then at the end of the event, we'll have desserts and there will be some beverages for donation for people who want to join in. Yeah. It would be a great chance to not only learn more about our organization, but to see some great films. The virtual option, we can't provide dessert or beverages, but we can give you access to the lineup of great films. And that's both options for buying tickets are available at copperriver.org. As soon as you go to that site, a pop-up will come up that says upcoming event, buy tickets. And so if you follow those links, it can, will lead you to find out more information.
Yeah.
There also be door prizes. And for those who are members that participate in either the virtual or the in-person event, we have some great incentive prizes to renew memberships or just to say thank you, a chance to win them, to say thank you for being a member.
And I'm, as I look at the, the site here, a lot of familiar names that have made donations for those, which again, if people want to see more of the specifics, copperriver.org has got that on there. And then the, the, along the membership line, it looks like you also have a, a chance to, to leverage your donation to turn it every dollar into two?
Yes. Thank you. Yeah. For the first $2,000 raised, one of our generous donors has said that they will match that. So we're hoping to at least meet that 2,000 in memberships goal. So, and you can go ahead and sign up today. You don't have to wait till the event to do that. We'll be able to track memberships coming in now as part of this event outreach and leading up to the event. And anyone who renews between now and the event and participates in the event, either virtually or online, will be put in for the, the membership drawing. And we'll, we're working on the final. We have a barnacle seafood gift basket that will be shipped anywhere in the United States. So families who tune in from afar can become a member and be entered to win great prizes that will be shipped right to their door.
Okay. And before we get into day number two, I'm curious, you know, we, we've, in the multiple conversations we've had with the, the Alzheimer's Association, we've talked about having to have hybrid or virtual events. And while on the one hand, it was kind of like, oh, we can't get together and have the personal connection. On the other hand, it's really opened the door to people who, you know, say around Alaska, you know, and Valdez, close by Valdez, Glen Allen, farther away in Anchorage, up in the interior, places around the country now, if they know, or they are told by somebody pointing you to the website, you can have participation in things like this. And, and as a result, possibly investment from, from who knows where. Have you noticed that the question underlying all of this is, have you noticed more outside participation now that, as you said, you've built these virtual muscles?
Man.
Or is it hard to tell?
Question. It's a great question that I am not the best one suited to answer. I think we certainly have as an organization had a pretty strong connection from outside audiences. Sometimes it's been because of, you know, personal connections with like, whether it was Ricky Ott and Christian Carpenter, our founding board president and executive director. So like their families and friends were tuned in and we've continued to build those connections. But we've also been able to partner with the Copper River Prince William Sound Marketing Association and use kind of like a social marketing strategy. So helping to host events that attract people and help connect them with ways that they can buy Copper River salmon in their community and then help them understand what we do as an organization to help perpetuate the availability of Copper River salmon through our habitat and monitoring work. But, and then we've also worked with Sina Sea and 60 North. Most recently, Sina Sea worked with our, some of my, my teammates here at the office to put together a virtual cooking show last year. And with it were meal boxes that were available for sale to be able to purchase the ingredients that included Coho salmon straight from Sina Sea. And then there was a accompanying video that, that featured our executive director, Lisa and basis program coordinator, Dan Schmaler, working with Sina Wheeler of Sina Sea, going through the recipe and how to do it. So as is hard with any virtual event, especially when you're reaching an audience across the country, there's time changes that you're dealing with and picking the best time for the right time zone is, have not figured out that part of it. And then as is planning in Cordova, you never know what the weather's going to do and how that weather is going to influence people either to not want to be inside or to not want to leave their house. Or maybe it's the perfect weather combination where people are running to come out. You know, it's just, it's been up and down. But I think the, the main lesson is that, you know, what we can do to try to reach out and connect and let people know that we appreciate them and that we want to be engaged with them. We can just continue to do our efforts to, to make those opportunities and follow up on those connections that are made and, and keep growing those muscles from the lessons that we learned and from what other like organizations are learning, what works and doesn't work. So.
Well, it'd be neat if people would spread the word around, you know, and, and you might get some participation from other places. Although I know, I don't know why you'd want Ricky Ott doing that. She's such a quiet little mouse. I may have just shortened my life. Okay. So you've got the films, the films, the evening of the 22nd and then the 23rd, special Saturday, the 23rd, Max Romi, is that how you say the name?
Yeah. So Max Romi is a watercolor artist from Alaska. And actually we had selected one of his films for our lineup, Give a Beach a Bottle, I believe is the correct name for that. And it's about marine debris. And then I'm not exactly sure how the connection was made. I believe our amazing Dottie Widman, who is connected to all amazing artists, it seems like, whether it was direct or indirect, she was connected with Max and was interested in bringing him over for a watercolor workshop. And then Cordova Gear was on board to help. His latest film, Trailbound Alaska, is about, I think, bike trails and recreational access on trails. And so, so yeah, so he was willing and interested in coming over to town. So he'll be at our event on Friday night. And folks can also register through the Net Loft or through our website for the watercolor workshops. There's going to be two of them on Saturday, an indoor mountaintop to tabletop from nine to 11:00 in the morning. And then Cordova Sketching with Max will be in the afternoon. And then that evening, back at the Cordova Center, starting at seven, so two nights of movies is Trailbound Alaska, which I think is, I don't know the full length of that film. I'm sorry. But that one, our film fest is relatively a series of short films, no more than an hour total. And I don't know, this is a longer film, but I don't know the full runtime.
Yeah, I don't see it here either. But I mean, it does look, it, it looks fascinating. And, you know, watercolor is, it's remarkable. I mean, we've, we've seen our, our local watercolor artists, the things that they've been able to do. And this is, this is not the little thing with eight colors and preschool anymore. I mean, this is incredible stuff. So an opportunity to learn how to do that from somebody who's clearly very good at it. Yeah. So, and, and more information again on these things on the Wild and Scenic Film Festival and associated events can be seen at copperriver.org as well as the, the registration that you mentioned. Maybe if you opt to make a donation to, to be one of the people who has every dollar turned into two. And there's a good comprehensive page on this that I've been looking at under, or if you just go to copperriver.org, again, it pops up. In fact, I was trying to move the pop-up while I was trying to get to the page, not realizing I should have just clicked the pop-up in the first place. Let me see here. I guess we, so yeah, we talked about Max. So is there anything else, just kind of more broadly that, that you want to leave us with? Or does that kind of cover it?
Uh, I think that covers the, the gist of the events. We are, for our dessert component of the evening, recruiting, we've got an amazing repertoire of bakers in Cordova. And so if, if you're interested in making your contribution through a dessert donation, that gets you free entry to the Friday Night Film Festival and will help with us, our fundraising for our innovation on fish habitat restoration projects. And if it's not too much to jump back to the habitat restoration piece, I think, you know, I emphasize a lot on the, the restoration for fish. But I think I just want to highlight that since we talked about COVID and how that affected our in-person events, that it, fish habitat restoration is something that can't be impacted by COVID. It was something, it was an economy that kept on going. And we were really proud to be able to help make sure that during a year in 2020, when so many things were coming to a screeching halt, that we were able to keep people working. Their Wilson Construction had a great crew working for many months out the road. And there's actually, the University of Oregon has done some studying economics of fish habitat restoration. And for, you know, they were looking at for a million dollars of restoration, it was 1.5 to 2.3 million dollars was generated through the community. And so, you know, we certainly approached fish habitat restoration because of the importance that we see for the fish and therefore the fisheries that are, you know, the backbones of our cultures and our lifestyles and our economies. But there's also the economy of restoration itself that we're proud to be supporting and helping keep people to work. And yeah, just it's a way of life.
Yeah. Yeah. Well, very multi, multifaceted, you know, in that, in that it's helping, it's helping the, the flora and the fauna and the environment around us and the people who rely on that for their livelihoods and/or their enjoyment of the area. So I mean, it seems very, seems very win-win. And I hope that as, that these other, as, as these other projects fall into place, that you and I can come together and visit about it, visit about it some more. Cause we'd love to do what we can to, to share with our audience what's going on too. And, and being able to have, you know, that these conversations to something that, you know, while flyers and, and, and webpages are certainly valuable, that, that really being able to hear from the people who lead these projects, I think has great value. So I like being able to, to do that with you. And we'll look forward to the next one.
Well, I sure appreciate the invitation and the opportunity to share an update on what we're doing. It seems like we're so often celebrating getting done and with going right to the next project that needs to be done, that it's important to take time to talk about it and talk about why we're doing it so that people understand it might, might be inconveniencing here and there to have road shut down or a little extra dust in the air. But the long-term implications for the fish, for the road infrastructure and the ability, as we continue to see this dynamic delta continue to change with, you know, glaciers changing and river and precipitation changing, that these culverts not only help our fish, but they'll help keep our, our road hopefully intact as well.
Yeah. As much so as possible. I don't know if we'll ever be able to get back out to the glacier again or not, but crossing the fingers.
Well, they, exciting. There, there's going to be some work to keep actually more of an airstrip out there. So you might not be getting there in the traditional sense of driving, but the ability to land planes there is going to be, the safety will be improved. And I know the Forest Service continues to maintain the beautiful facilities out there so that people will still be able to enjoy or can still enjoy. It is just a little harder to get there.
Just isn't anything like it. Well, Kate, thank you again very much for the visit and good luck with all the things.
Well, thanks so much, JR. Great talking with you and look forward to doing it again. And invite anyone to reach out at our office or give us a call, 424-3334.
And copperriver.org. Kate Morse, Program Director for the Copper River Watershed Project. Really nice to have her with us here today. As my voice tries to die. On the Town Meeting Program sponsored by Cordova Wireless Communications, connecting you to the world via a CTC, that's Cordova Telephone Cooperative, of course, owned and operated fiber optic cable. That means all the services offered by Cordova Wireless and CTC are more reliable and faster because fiber cable doesn't fail like many other services. And they do all that while keeping your money in town. We sure appreciate the support of Cordova Wireless Communications. We appreciate you listening in. The rest of the 10 AM hour programming to which you are entitled is coming up. And this show, in case you missed it or had to tune in late, will eventually end up on our YouTube channel, which is youtube.com/cordovatv, the companion to Cordova Radio. Don't you know, Cordova TV. Soon as Robbie gets that up there, then we will let you know in the Cordova calendar. So thanks again for listening. Feel free to stay tuned and we'll see you next time that it's time for a Town Meeting Talk Show.